Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 General Committee Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we'll call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Ms. Diesart, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mr. O'Chee.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman is not with us. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Diesart?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Thank you. Agenda item number 1.5 is the 2025 Committee Assignments, and you all have a copy of those in front of you, and so I'll read those. St. Bernard Parish School Board, 2025 Committee Assignments and External Responsibilities. For our committee co-chairperson, Shawn Warner and Diana Diesart for the Executive Committee, Kelly Lee Bowman and Carly Creason, the Finance Committee, Millie Harris and Henry Rodriguez, Insurance Committee, Kisa Rodney and Donald Campbell, the Building and Grounds Committee, and Rosalyn White and Shawn Warner for the Education Committee. For External Responsibilities, Diana Diesart, Federal Government Relations, Carly Creason, Local Governmental Relations, Rosalyn White and Kisa Rodney for Louisiana School Board Association Relations, Don Campbell for the LSU External Relations, Millie Harris, Head Start Policy Council Member, Catherine Lemoine, Higher Ed Relations, Shawn Warner Bessie Relations, and Henry Rodriguez, Louisiana Legislative Relations. Thank you to all the board members for serving on these committees. Agenda item number 2.1 is a presentation of the School Board Member Training Certificates for the 2024 Calendar Year. So as you all know, the Louisiana Legislature requires each member of the city and parish school board to receive six hours of training and instruction, and I'm happy to announce this evening that all of our board members have received their training hours, their required training hours. So, Don Campbell, 6.5 training hours, Carly Jackson, 14.5 training hours, Diana Diesart, 9.5 training hours, Millie Harris, 28.5 training hours, Kelly Lee Bowman, 14 training hours, Catherine Lemoine, 27 training hours, Joe Long, 6 training hours, Kisa Rodney, 18 training hours, Henry Rodriguez, 14 training hours, Shawn Warner, 7.5 training hours, and Rosalyn White, 12 training hours. So congratulations to all of the board members, and thank you all for remaining in compliance with that legislative requirement. Okay, agenda item number 2.2 is the recognition of certified school board members for the 2024 Calendar Year. The Louisiana School Boards Association has in place a voluntary program whereby a member is recognized for attaining a certain number of continuing learning units during a calendar year. This program is strictly voluntary and not part of the law regarding school board member training. Any school board member that voluntarily earns 20 or more approved training hours during a calendar year is recognized for their efforts as a certified board member at the LSBA Annual State Convention. And this year, we have Millie Harris as a certified board member and myself, and congratulations. Agenda item number 2.3 is a presentation by Keep St. Bernard Beautiful, and we have several members of the committee here with us tonight, and we want to welcome you all, but we will welcome to the podium Mr. Dennis Bradley from St. Bernard Parish Government to present this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I know everybody here, I'm happy to say that. As many of you know, after when I retired from St. Bernard Parish Schools, I took a job with parish government, and my position there has to do with inspection of stormwater drains and things like that, and one of the things that we have to do with that is we have to have some sort of a program set up to try and keep stormwater from being polluted and keeping litter out of the storm drains. That's a state requirement that we have. And one of the things that we saw out there was Keep Louisiana Beautiful. Keep Louisiana Beautiful is a, it's a program that's now part of the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and it's an initiative to clean up the state. And so what we did is we started a, an affiliate of Keep Louisiana Beautiful, Keep St. Bernard Beautiful, and we went through the process that they have to set up a board of directors, formed a 401(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and, you know, we're affiliated with parish government, but at the same time, we're not affiliated. We're sort of independent of parish government. And, you know, we have a 15-member board that we, that we, that we set up. We have some of the members here in the audience today that are members of the board. You know, we have a cross-section of people in the parish. We have, you know, we have a former councilman, Howard Luna, is the chairperson. We have, we have other people that work for the school board at this point in time. We have other people that are retired from the school board, like myself. And, you know, we have Justice of the Peace, we have a number of people who work for parish government, and it's, our intention is to clean up St. Bernard. We have a very serious litter problem in this parish. I, I guess I noticed it before I took the position, but since I took the position, I've noticed that, you know, there's, there's a lot of litter in this parish, and there's a lot of things that we could do to help beautify this parish. And so when we started the organization, you know, we started this affiliate, you know, that's our intention, to make St. Bernard a better place to live, to help clean it up. And we need your help with that. That's why we're here, okay? We need your help with that because we can't pick up all the trash. You know, we've got to get people to stop littering. We've got to get people involved in, you know, cleaning up this parish, and the best place to start with that is with the students, okay? To teach them, you know, this is the right thing to do. This is what we need to do. And, you know, we have, we have, we have a lot of people that are interested in helping us, and like I said, we want to, we want to partner with you on some things to be able to, you know, get students involved in, you know, cleaning up this parish and make it a better place for everybody to live. I have a PowerPoint presentation here, so we have a few things here, some initiatives that we, that we've done already and that we're working on also. We, last year for Love the Boot Week, which is coming up this year, April 5th through 13th, that's a big project with Lieutenant Governor's Office, cleaning up the state. Can you go back to the first, the first slide? Thank you. Okay, yeah. So, we're 501(c)(3), nonprofit affiliated with Keep Louisiana Beautiful, dedicated promoting and enacting beautification, recycling, and litter abatement initiatives across St. Bernard Parish. And Keep Louisiana Beautiful was founded in the year 2000, and focuses on education and enforcement, awareness, and litter removal and beautification. There is affiliates all over the state, there's one in every parish, plus some parishes have more than one. So we're, you know, we're looking to, I, well, I guess, yeah, we're looking to make this the premier affiliate in the state, and so we're, we're working hard to get some things done. And our board of directors, as you see there, we have Howard Luna as the chairperson, Julie Gennar, the vice chair, Rhett Pritchard is, he's here right now, he's the secretary treasurer. We have Sarah Felk, Kim Nunez, Tamara Jones, Eva Jaber, Laura Schultz, Kevin Hoffman, Matt Woodward, Robert Patches, Ally Warner, Tony Morales, Jean Fernandez, and Megan Harrington. All these people make up our board, and they're people that are interested in doing something to make this parish better. Next slide? So, we have three committees that we've set up, our recycling committee, a litter abatement committee, and beautification. And, you know, we have some, some things that we have, have planned, that we've done already, and some things that we have planned. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. Last year for Love the Boot Week, we did a cleanup in Village Square behind, behind Village, Village Square Shopping Center. We also, we planted a wildflower garden in Torres Park, and that's coming along well. We did a parish cleanup day, it was in neighborhood around, around Nunez Community College. We're working right now on a Val Reese tree planting project. Val Reese playground needs more trees in it, and this parish has lost a lot of trees over the last few years because of so many storms that have hit us. So we're working on raising money for, put more trees there, and Val Reese is just the first place that we're looking at to put more trees in, all the different parks in the parish, plus we'd also like to get some trees in some of the school yards. You know, some of them are pretty bare, and I know you've lost some over the years because there, there were some in some places, so that's one of the things we want to look at also, working with y'all. We're also working on a parish-wide tree planting project where we're, we have a grant that we've applied for, and it's looking like we got the grant for about $45,000 worth of trees to plant in neutral grounds in different places around the parish. We are working, you know, on the Love the Boot Week activities for this year. Can you go to the next, next slide? Okay, and what we're doing is, last year for Love the Boot Week, we had five different activities that took place for Love the Boot Week, and this year, I think we're at the, at 14 right now, different activities for Love the Boot Week that we're going to do. We're partnering with the Community Senator of St. Bernard, they're doing a Love the Boot Activities, OLPS is doing Love the Boot Activities with the school over there. We have, the LSU Ag Center is actually coming in, and they're going to do a tree trimming workshop at the Public Works Office on St. Bernard Highway, and to show people how to trim their trees, okay? And so you have, you know, be a nicer, nicer parish with nicer-looking trees. And Oak Ridge Neighborhood Association, and Nunez Community College, St. Bernard Fire Department, Brewster's Gulf Coast Bank, League of Angels have all, not made commitments in all cases, but have decided that they want to do something with it. We have a few other, I know Lexington, Lexington Place Homeowners Association, and, let's see, who else did I talk to today? I had the UPS Store, they're going to do something in Village Square also. So we have a number of different groups that are going to be doing different activities for the week, and, you know, we want to encourage you as board members, but also encourage any, you know, any of the students or teachers that want to come out and help in any of these, or if you'd like to organize one, it's relatively simple. You know, we also, we're getting some support from the Kiwanis Club and other organizations like that, and, you know, we're looking forward to working with more groups. Now, we have some community partners also, we're, the Chamber of Commerce, we're partnering with them on some projects and all kinds of different things. The Mero Foundation is helping fund some of what we're doing, St. Bernard Tourist Commission is helping us out with some things, and also we have the St. Bernard Parish Government that, you know, that I work for, and, you know, doing some things with us. So, you know, we, we have a lot of support out there in the community, and we have a lot of things that we're working on, and like I said, we, we want to get involved, you know, and get, get the school system involved in what we're doing. And I left you with a number of things, some of the things that the State Association has us working on, you know, the environmental stewardship, there's something about that. I gave y'all the Clean Biz for Businesses to get involved in cleaning up St. Bernard Parish. I also brought one thing, and this, I believe most of the schools have this, if they don't, I'm going to get, get it to them. This is a curriculum that aligns with the state, with the state standards on environmental, environmental issues and environmental lessons for K-12. And so one of the things that we, we plan on offering also is, we have people, I also have, we have a few people lined up already that could come into the schools and talk about environmental issues, talk about recycling, talk about beautification, talk about litter abatement and things like that, and, you know, different issues, even coastal issues that you might need. We have some people that, you know, that are part of our group and also, you know, here in the community that can talk about those things to our students. And I also left you with a little activity book for your kids or grandkids, if you would like, okay? We, we want to give these out in the schools also, get these into the schools and get, you know, get this message out that we need to, we need to clean up Louisiana, and we need to clean up St. Bernard Parish. It's, you know, this is a beautiful place to live, we all know that, but, you know, there's, there's people in our community that don't do the right thing, you know? They, they leave trash places, they throw trash out of their car, and it, it harms us all. You know, it's not good for our community, it's not good for us personally. So, like I said, we want to partner with you in any way that we can, and so if you have any questions, I'm, I'm available. I left my card with everybody also, in case, and, also, oh, yeah. This is, I left everybody one of these. It's a, it's a kind of a coaster thing. You put this in, and you keep this in your car, where you keep your, your drink in your car, okay? It'll absorb the, it'll absorb the moisture, but also it's got a number on here, a number that you can call. If you see somebody littering, okay? You're, you're driving down the street, and you see somebody littering, that number right there will hook you into the state, the Wildlife and Fisheries Office, and they, they have the, the power to, to write tickets for litter, okay? If you, you want to call this number, give them your information, and report the litter, they can do something about it. So keep that in your car.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bradley, for your presentation, and before I open the floor for any questions or comments, I do just want to take a moment to recognize the members of your board that are with us this evening. We have Rhett Pritchard, Sarah Felk, Kim Nunez, Eva Jaber, Kevin Hoffman, and Jean Fernandez, so thank you all for taking time.
And Tony Morales.
And Tony Morales. Yes, I'm sorry, Tony, I forgot you over there. Thank you all for, for being here tonight, and to all the members of your board for their participation.
Thank you.
Questions from board members? Millie?
Did we, as a parish, apply for the trash receptacle grant that they had during the fall, and if not, will we apply?
We didn't make it in time.
Okay, so maybe next year?
It will be next year, yes, and we are, we are in the process right now of trying to secure some money to, to purchase some of those and not just, you know, get the grant. So we want to, we want to move forward on that right now. We were, we've been talking about that in our last few meetings.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Diesart?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bradley, for coming tonight, and to the members of the committee, I want to thank them for being involved in this committee. Years ago, we had Beautify St. Bernard Parish Committee, and at that time, we were looking to actually give citizens an opportunity to report litterers, because, you know, I know all of us have had this, sitting on a corner with Judge Perez, any of the streetlights and right in front of you, being there, throwing trash. But anyway, there was an enforcement problem, so I'm glad to see this number here, but I'm wondering, you're saying, like, if someone reports, takes a picture of a plate and reports a litterer, they're going to have, can they remain anonymous, or do they?
No, I think their, their name's going to have to be attached to it, yes.
Okay.
Their name's going to have to be attached to it.
Okay.
Now, we also, something I forgot to mention, we also have a program at the public library, okay, that if, if you want to go around your neighborhood and pick up trash, okay, you can check out the trash grabbers, some bags, and also some gloves and vests and everything. They're at the public library, we left them there. It's a state program that's been going on for years that we just got involved in, and so that's another thing, another, another thing we have out there working for us. But also, when it comes to enforcement, you could call your constable too. Your constable and the JPs, those are the people that handle litter enforcement.
Can they actually take action, though?
Yes, they can.
Because I know years ago, at, at the time that we tried to do it.
Yeah, they can. The parish has rewritten the laws and the ordinances so that they can, they can actually do something. I know Ms. Bowman's husband just, she, he fined Walmart, I believe it was, for all the litter that was around their store.
Right.
And what it was causing in the community. I know that didn't go over well with some people, but.
Well, they have to be good.
It was important.
Community partners, yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, and I'm so glad to see that this committee is resurrected, and, great, thank you.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Lemoine, and thank you, Mr. Bradley, for your initiative and for your committee for working together to get this done. Can you elaborate on the Val Reese project, the tree planting project at Val Reese?
Well, what, what it is, we're, we're trying to raise money. When Val Reese was done, all the trees that were in the plans were not put in there. They ran out of money, basically, and so they didn't put in all the trees. And so we looked at that and said, that's a project we can take on. We can raise some money. What we're doing is, you know, we're raising money, and we, and you can deposit it at Gulf Coast Bank, okay? Gulf Coast Bank is helping us with that, we have an account there, and you can deposit, it's $100 you could, you could pay for a tree. You know, we've raised about $5,000 or $6,000 already, and that's going to, what is that, about 40 trees? About 40 trees that we're going to put in there.
A hundred and five thousand.
What's that?
Just divide a hundred into it, Dennis.
Well, you're a math person. I'm a social studies person, Mr. O'Chee, you know I can't do that. I can, you can do the math. I could tell you the history of the trees.
Ah, here we go.
But, so, so what we have there is an account set up, and anyone can go in and donate $100, and that would, that would pay for one of the trees there. And we, we looked at, you know, we're not getting little saplings, we're getting fairly larger trees that are already grown a little bit, plus, you know, we have to put in the, what do you call, the, the poles to hold them up, and the wires, and then they have to be watered on a regular basis, and there's some maintenance that goes with them, and some things to keep the, the nutrients from eating them also. So all that stuff, you know, costs a little money, so it's about $100 a tree to plant one of those trees, and so, you know, that's what we're asking the community, whatever they can do, you know? Anybody can sponsor a tree.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you also, the beautification passed, I think it's Packingham, going from Judge Perez, and it cuts all the way to St. Bernard Highway, and one of the little drainage canals that passed there, they had like six, seven shopping carts they pulled out all dirty.
Yeah, they just, yeah.
And that's amazing. And about the tree planting program, I guess maybe y'all take volunteers. Many years ago, when I was a young man, in the early 80s, I planted a bunch of cypress and pine trees, and from Verratt all the way to Breakway by the fork, all those cypress trees, there was other, others involved, and I passed there and then, they 40-foot tall.
Yeah.
And if I had to go inside the canal to, to plant another one, I'd roll in it. So, you know, people that volunteer, they will get satisfaction later on in years because they say, man, I planted that tree, and a lot of them are gone, a lot of them don't make it, because the ones we planted was the size of a number two standard pencil, maybe 12 inches, 15 inches high.
And now.
And, you know, so they get ate up, and they get cut with the side mower, but, you know, people that want to volunteer, you can get a lot of personal satisfaction. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, well, again, Mr. Bradley, and to the entire committee, thank you all for your, your work and dedication, and of course, we want to be a great partner in this and continue to instill these good civic, community-minded elements with our students, all the way from preschool all the way up. So just keep us informed with how we can support your work and get our students involved.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Agenda. Agenda item number 3.1 is an education item. Ms. White?
Thank you. ClearPass implementation, new access points. Good evening, everyone. The administration has asked me to speak to you on two of our technology projects, our most recent technology projects. That's ClearPass and then the wireless access points. If you remember, a few years back, right at the end of summer, right before school started, there was a rash of compromised data centers across the state, and many of those were educational institutions. So that spurred us to look into our network and how secure it is, and what we needed to do to make it more secure so that we didn't end up becoming one of those parishes who was asked to pay millions of dollars to get their data back. So the overarching goal of ClearPass is to enhance the network of our security. One of the problems we needed to combat was individuals bringing personal devices and putting them on our network. Prior to just recently, that process of getting onto our network was a very simple process. If you had a Cat 5 cable, you could plug directly into an Ethernet jack that was available in any one of the locations of the school, or if you knew the Wi-Fi password, which even though we change frequently, it only takes one leak for it to take effect across the whole district. The problem with people accessing and bringing their personal devices onto our network is that we have no way of knowing the health of that device. We have no way of knowing if that device has compromises that may be transferred and transmitted to other devices on our network, and as we all know, those compromises are the way that these individuals hack into data centers. So ClearPass is a solution, a management platform, that allows us to define which devices can access our network and which devices cannot access our network. For example, the Promethean boards that we see in every classroom have Wi-Fi capability. Those are allowed on our network because within the ClearPass platform, we have whitelisted them by their individual MAC addresses. Chromebooks are allowed on our Wi-Fi because they have to be into our Google console, which is specific to St. Bernard Parish Schools. If they're not in that Google console, they cannot access the network. Guests and presenters can access our network by going to the guest network and filling in a few questions about the nature of their visit, and then that request is submitted and approved by one of the four people that have been designated as approvers for individuals to receive access to the network. So ClearPass clearly removes the flawed process of selecting networks and entering passwords that is virtually impossible to keep contained, so that flawed process no longer exists. You either have to be on a device that is already approved, or you have to request access and be approved. The second item, as far as the access points, if you remember, back in November of 2023, came before the board to ask for approval to put out an RFP, successfully chose a vendor, and in March of 2024, the E-Rate window closed and all applications began to be considered. Our funding commitment letter was received in September, and we began to roll out our project of removing and installing new access points and enrolling them into the management console over the Christmas break. So that project is now winding down, there are a few. There are a few outstanding issues that we will be addressing in the next week or so, and then that project shall be complete. We, as an administration, anticipate that this should be the last major technology project for the school district in the upcoming years. Just to name a few, but not all. We have moved to mostly off-site services to reduce maintenance costs and to increase access and security. We have replaced domain controllers. We have replaced switches in all our networking closets across the district. We bought new Promethean boards for every classroom, new Chromebooks for kids, new teacher laptops with Windows 11, new desktops with Windows 11, new security cameras, and soon we'll have new Wi-Fi. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Joe?
So, Mr. Brown, I'm unclear. ClearPass is, is it like a software program?
Yes, sir.
And is there a cost to this, to the board?
There is. There's a renewal cost, an annual renewal cost, and I don't have that price with me off my mind, off the top of my head.
And this is something we never had before?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, and what are you looking for tonight? A motion to?
I was just asked to keep you an up, just to give you an update on where we are with some of the technology projects and to, I guess, in a way, give you a peace of mind that we are moving towards, if not completed, a successful lockdown of our network.
Okay, yeah, I can remember, Mr. Fernandez came to us with insurance to cover, like breaches and stuff, and this will help, this will help make our system.
It helps us with insurance premiums and such. And I, it, it's sort of like in a, you know, everyday language kind of stuff. If you go somewhere, you go into a business, and you want to use, say, your laptop or even your phone to get on their Wi-Fi network, and you can open up, once you get into somebody's network and you have a virus, say, on your personal computer, or you have a problem, it can be transferred throughout that entire network. So, we've got a tremendous number of devices throughout the entire school district. I mean, how many thousands of Chromebooks? How many thousands of computers?
Maybe fifteen thousand total?
Which is an unbelievable number of devices. And what was happening is someone could just enter the school, plug something in. And they got very, the more we tried to lock it down, for example, you could go in, unplug into a, and I don't know all the terminology. You could go into and unplug one of ours from the wall, put your computer into it, get onto our network, and just be doing what you think is okay, but infect the entire network. We even had, we even had an auditor one time come in to do our audit that we allowed in and messed up part of our network in that it let loose a virus within it. So, in order to stop people from doing that, our, this, what the software does is it recognizes every one of our devices. And if someone plugs a foreign device in there, one that it does not recognize, it will not accept it. It will not work. So, you can come in and you cannot then get onto our network by plugging into anything that we have unless we allow you to do so. So, if we're having in-service and a presenter comes in, well, we have to know that presenter's coming in. They fill out the little form. Mr. Brown or there are a couple of other people can approve that particular device, not the presenter, the device that they've got to get onto our network. And we can do those, we can control it. So, it's much less of a likelihood of it being infected, where we hopefully won't have these kinds of problems. When we start, first put it in there, how many kids were saying, my device won't work?
The first day that the students came back from the Christmas break, I could basically not check my email for at least until two o'clock. Because, and that goes to show you, they were already used to being on our network. And like Ms. Voeche said, and that's, you know, I remember that situation. We did have an auditor came in here who needed Wi-Fi access, so we got him onto the Wi-Fi. And within a short period of time, and I'm talking within maybe an hour or so, we started seeing viruses popping up on machines here at the office. Now, the downfall of that is those viruses often contain programs that are searching for credentials on your network that would give them elevated access and allow them into other platforms like your data system. So, that's what those viruses are designed to do, is they're designed to scour for credentials, make you log in and out several times so that you keep plugging in, so that they can capture your password, capture your username. So, that's the danger. And ClearPass helps us eliminate that because in the past, it's been difficult to do that. Once I change, once you know the password, then you tell so-and-so, and you tell so-and-so, and you tell so-and-so, and then a teacher puts it on the board, and now we have all the kids on there. We change it, and then it gets out again. So, we've never had a very strong way of doing that, protecting people from getting onto the network with devices that we can't say are clean or don't have viruses. So, you may even be thinking, well, what about the guest network? You don't know that they're, well, that's true. However, they're on a separate network apart from our network. It's separated out. So, when they get on, they only have access to the Internet. They don't have access to any of our internal applications. So, all they can do is go to the Internet.
So, this is gonna help us with our insurance premium?
It could, yes. Because the more secure we are and the more that we can prove it, then the theory is, it's like your house. You get a fortified roof supposedly, you know, you can get a little reduction in your premium. So, the more secure you are, hopefully, we'll get a little bit of a reduction.
And hopefully, the insurance premium is enough to cover the cost of?
Well, recurring cars, cost, it, you know, talking from an old person here, you're chasing technology constantly. And every, and you know that in your own, either the business that you work for or your own personal stuff. I mean, you're trying to get the newest, the best application you have. And with a network as large as ours and all the software we use, the maintenance costs on that and the support costs on it continue to escalate. So, what was, what used to be a minor maybe cost within your budget for technology is gonna continue to grow and grow and grow. So, all we can do is the best that we can do to minimize that. But to think that we're gonna eliminate maintenance and support costs, no, never will. And to think that they won't escalate.
Well, this will help us out for a little while.
But it should help us. But it, it helps us more in that we have a very, then, secure network, as secure as it can possibly be. And we're constantly looking at ways to maintain that. You know, you hear throughout the country now and throughout the world, all the hackers, they get into this place and this place and that place. You know, there was a whole thing about a student information system, Power School that was infiltrated. We never have been on Power School, so we never had that particular piece of software. So, we didn't have to go out and talk about that. We're on something called J-Campus, and prior to that, we were on something called E-School. So, at that point, we're doing the best that we can, and this is just the next step. We had a funding source. We've used combinations of E-rate monies that we've done some of this. Well, for the access points, we used E-rate funds for those. With the ESAR funding that just, those three year fundings, we were able to do some of these and pour some dollars into it on upfront costs that put us in good stead, and now we'll have to continue to support those. Just like when you build a school and build a building, then you need those maintenance costs and support costs to keep everything clean and in good shape, you know? Same kind of thing with the technology.
And it's unfortunate, but some of the horror stories I've heard about these school districts was, you know, think about that. If they've gotten into your payroll system and they've, they've encrypted your data so that it's no longer usable to you, then how do you know how much I paid, what's your salary supposed to be, what your salary is supposed to be, what your salary is supposed to be? How do I write you a check? How do I pay you until I figure this out? Where are all the paper documentations that I have to go back and search for to figure out what each nine hundred or thousand employees make? So, that's, it's a pretty big risk. And to speak to your point just a little bit about the insurance, we did some other things this year as well that will also help out with that. We've, we implemented what's called multi-factor authentication, and that's a process by which, in order to get onto your email, your Clever account or your Google account, when you log in, it asks you to retrieve a code off your cell phone that is text to you. So, then you put that in, and then it grants you access. So, that is a measure that has been brought up by insurance companies before. What kind of authentication methods do you have? And we did do, we did rule that out at the beginning of the school year.
And we had to do that to even maintain insurance.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for keeping up with that, Boris.
Thank you. Any more questions?
So, in other words, you're a cybersecurity company, and Mr. Long had brought up that we're gonna have insurance to cover if we was to get hacked. And with the company, do y'all have insurance to cover y'all? If we was to not have enough insurance to cover the level of the damage that would be done?
I'm gonna let Ms. Voeche speak to that since the insurance part of this is kind of.
We have a certain amount of insurance. I mean, it, you know, I mean, hopefully, we're not in the big leagues where somebody's gonna hack into our system and say, give me ten million dollars, or else we're not gonna unencrypt your, your data. So, we do have some insurance, but when you say insurance on top of insurance, to cover what?
Well, say if they was to get a hold of a bunch of money out the account, the savings account, the twenty million in surplus we have. You know, for instance, like last year, a little while back, an airline got hacked. When it was all said and done, the cyber company, they end up suing the cyber company. The cyber company lost forty percent of its value in two days on the stock market. They're still gonna be going to court. So, they're gonna settle that, you know, the airline said, we lost this. You know, people were stranded in the, at the terminal. So, I was just wondering, you know, we're gonna have insurance.
We have a finite amount of insurance.
Finite amount. So, I was just.
So, if it exceeds that, then it's just like having a finite amount of property insurance.
So, I was just wondering if they had insurance to be on top of ours since they're all providing the service? That's all security.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. So, they don't?
No.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board? Diana?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your presentation. I have a question about the new access points. Is, so, is that part of the ClearPass? Or that's something separate as far as accessing building, the buildings?
No, the, the access points, as you can see right here.
Okay.
These are the devices that broadcast our network, our wireless network that allows you with a laptop to get onto the Internet. So, those were, I think, seven years old. So.
How old?
Seven years old. So, they were going out of, end of life, which means at some point, the company stops providing you with firmware updates, which is really important for security. So, we took our E-rate money and invested in replacing all of these access points across the district to the tune of, I think, nine hundred and two access points so that we could be in a more up-to-date situation.
So, like for class, we'll have an access point right in the middle of the ceiling in a classroom. So, when all the kids flip up and they get on their Chromebooks, they're trying to access, say, the, the Internet, well, it'll go right to the closest access point. And then when that access point, and I'm gonna use layman's terms, Ms. Brown, because, you know, when it fills up, then it goes and searches the next nearest access point. And then, so we have them throughout the building. We are in all of our classrooms and specific hallway areas and specific office situations so that when we get on our computers or our laptops, we can go through the access point and get on to the Internet in a much quicker and safer way.
Yeah, it's a way for you to.
And if one goes out, what it's gonna do, it's gonna search the next nearest one, and then we're gonna get an overload on that one.
Yeah. So, it's a way for you, it's a device that you put in your classrooms for you to access the Internet without being plugged into a wall with a cable. So, that's what, so there's two separate projects, but they were big projects. It took us five months to roll out ClearPass. We worked on it from July until right before Christmas. And then right after that, within a week or two, we were installing access points. So, I think the goal of the administration was for me just to give you an update on the projects that we've been working towards so that we can keep our kids technology savvy and keep up with the technology in the classrooms and also the, the security of our network.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brown, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Henry?
How lo, how long have y'all been in this particular business?
I have been, this little.
This comp, this, excuse me, this company?
So. Yes.
Okay, okay. I'm in, I'm in the wrong direction.
Mr. Brown was a science teacher with us, and then a teacher of the gifted, and then got into technology.
Okay, so this, this isn't an independent company?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, okay, I'm, I'm in the wrong direction because I was saying, I thought it was a software company we, we hired.
Oh, no. Uh-uh, uh-uh.
Excuse me, sir.
That's okay.
He works for us and spearheads these projects. So, he's our technology supervisor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number four point one is a review of performance contracts.
This is, this is just an informational item. And every two years, we renew our performance contracts for our administrators. And we put them all on two-year performance contracts. And then every two years, you know, if, if by some chance I was not going to renew an administrator's contract, I would have to give them a hundred and twenty days' advance notice of non-renewal. So, the ones that, these twenty-one people listed on here are up for renewal. These are primarily our principals or assistant principals or coordinators and supervisors, our administrators in the district. These people's contracts are up for renewal, and the only thing I'm doing tonight is just informing you is my intention to renew all of their contracts for another two years. Okay?
Any questions for Ms. Voeche? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number four point two, personnel changes for February 2025. And we have Ms. Natalie Alvarez with us this evening.
Good evening. In your folder, you'll find the minutes from our last school board meeting with personnel changes.
And again, this is for information only. I see we do have some retirees. I'll send it to Ms. Daisar.
Thank you, Mr. Lam, Ms. Lemoine. I just wanna recognize our retirees who are unfortunately retiring, and, but good for them that they are. And we wanna just wish a happy retirement and to thank them for their very, very long tenure with us and for being our employees for so, so long and doing a great job. And they are Diane Smith from Goche Elementary. She's a paraeducator. Denise Lips from Shamet High School. She's a custodian. And Deborah Taylor, who is a custodian at Mira Elementary. And we wanna just, again, wish them a very happy retirement and thank them for their service.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daisar.
And I just wanna say, all three of, of these ladies are just excellent people that have been with us for so long. Diane Smith is a tremendous paraeducator at Goche. I mean, I can't even remember what it was like about her there. I think she worked with Ms. Lemoine at Goche years ago. And then Ms. Lips and Ms. Taylor as our custodial staff. It's hard to replace people who have given so much time into these, in these positions to service our kids. So, we will miss them, but we do wish them a very happy retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Okay, agenda item number five point one is a finance committee item, so we'll send that to Ms. Creason.
All right. Item five point one, we have requests for permission to advertise to bid for bread and bread products for the period of July first through June 30th, 2026 for the St. Bernard Parish School Board. I'm Ms. Maron.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm here to, I'm gonna go over a list of a couple of things. This is for the, obviously, for the upcoming school year, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year of all of these items. So, I'm here to request permission to advertise for bids for bread and bread products for July first, twenty-five. for bids for bread and bread products for July 1st, '25 through June 30th, '26.
I'll so move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Dysar, a second by Mr. Long. Any other questions or discussions? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Moving on, item number 5.2 is request for permission to advertise to bid for milk and milk products.
Yes, once again, this is, so I can advertise for milk and milk products for July 1st, 20, uh, 25 through June 31st, '26.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, a second by Ms. Lamoy. Any questions, comments? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. Item 5.3, request for permission to advertise to bid for food products for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Yes, this, uh, this item is through, Ms. Jackson said the request for, the request permission to bid for the food products, that is, like canned foods, frozen foods. This is the majority of the bid for July 1st through June 31st, '26.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. White. Do I have a second? A second by Ms. Lamoy. Yes, please.
It's not really about the bid, but just about the seafood. When we're serving seafood on campus, do we have to say where the seafood comes from now underneath the state law? Do we have to say where we're getting the seafood from?
I believe so. I'll, I'll double-check on that. But everything that we get is local. So, um, so while we're talking about that, we actually, at the warehouse just today, received 8,710 pounds of shrimp-
Oh, wow.
-that we got from a grant from USDA. So we submitted the receipts and everything, and we're going to get reimbursed for that. So our children actually have, like, real Gulf shrimp, like locally caught shrimp, that we're going to prepare throughout Lent-
Excellent.
On Fridays. So yes, and that all, that all does come from, everything is lo, is local.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No? All right. There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
All right. And last on my list is request for permission to advertise to bid for produce for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Yes. This is the request permission to bid for fresh fruits and vegetables for the upcoming school year. Those are done, we had talked previously, that those are done on a monthly basis. So this is just permission for that school year. And then because the price of fresh fruits and vegetables does fluctuate quite a bit, we send out a bid every single month. So that's just giving permission to bid every month for the next school year.
I'll so move. Motion on the floor by Ms. Dysar, a second by Mr. Long. Any other questions, comments? No? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morale. Thank you, Ms. Creason. Agenda item number 6.1 is an executive committee item. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamoy. Item 6.1 is consideration of adopting revision of school board policy JCDAE. Mr. Morale?
Hello, everybody. Usually, we don't have many law changes, or should I say, policy changes at this time of year. However, on January 1st, the legislature passed an addition to Bulletin 741. And in the addition, they said by March 1st, they want the policy to include these five items, which are highlighted on the last page that I gave you all. Just to let you know, Bulletin 741 is, is over 100 pages long. Therefore, I just printed out the one page and highlighted for you what they want us to change in this policy. So you'll see that there, A, B, C, D, and E. It includes basically a definition for the instructional day, as well as a few other points that they wanted us to include in the policy. A, B, C, D, and E. And then if you look at the policy, you'll see in blue are the additions that cover A, B, C, D, and E. And then we had one in red, which was, we just changed the word academic to instructional. So again, this is a policy that, believe it or not, we updated in August. However, they, the legislature came out, or, or the board came out and asked us to, to add these things to bulletin, from Bulletin 741. And then once it's passed by you all, this committee meeting and the next general meeting, I'll have to submit this to the actual Louisiana Association.
Yes, so, Mr. Long? So, Mr. Morales, in reading this, uh, looks like the biggest change is the wearing of the technology, correct?
Yes, sir. They, we're just trying to, they, they want us to make sure that we cover all the bases. You know, it, back before it was just a cellphone, and, or maybe now it's a laptop, and a tablet, and AirPods, and, you know, a lot of wearable technology now, watches, AirPods. So they want to try to encompass all of that. And then the, the, one of the major changes they wanted us to add was, um, just kind of to define what an instructional day is, when it starts, when it ends. Just to give a parameter of when kids should get off of their cellphones, you know, store them, and put them away.
So they can still store them in their backpacks, but they have to be off, correct?
That, yes, sir. That is correct. So the, the policy says a couple of different things. So the policy first says that they should not be on campus. Then it says, however, if they are on campus, make sure that they are turned off and put away. So, so I know that sounds kind of silly, but yes, sir, that is what the policy says, based on what the law says. The law states that they should not bring them, however, however, if they do bring them, to please have them turned off and stored away. Yes, sir.
And if they violate this policy, there's a, there's a penalty-
On the second page, yes, sir. It says that-
Of suspension, correct?
It could be. Yes, sir. So it does say, as included in the guidance of conduct, which, um, i- it could be a Class 1 infraction, could be a Class 2 infraction, could be a Class 3 infraction, based on what they're actually doing with the cellphone itself, if it is in fact out.
So we don't have to collect the cellphones and store them away?
No, sir. No, sir.
They can keep them themselves?
That, yes, sir. It does say that in the policy, that they can keep it, just has to be turned off and stowed away.
Okay. Thank you.
What happened was the legislature passed the law in the last session. And it said by, um, Bulletin 741 comes out of the State Department of Education. So they changed their policies and put into their bulletin things that are reflective of what the legislature has done. So it took the department, so we, when we did our policy in August, based on the legislative statute that was revised, it was an acceptable policy. The State Department of Ed then modified just here in January, because you can see at the bottom where it says, January 2025. They went ahead and modified Bulletin 741 to make it a little more restrictive in saying what you had to mention in your policy. So when Ms. Morales says A, B, C, D, and E, now that that has been put into Bulletin 741, we have to make sure our policy refers to that and mentions that, and adopt it, and send it to the Department of Ed on March 1st. Okay? So they just came out with the Bulletin 741 revision, based upon the legislative act that was passed in the last session.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Harris?
I have a quick question and potentially a recommendation. I realize that if we go through listing everything, it's going to be a million pages long. But one thing that I noticed that's not on here, that we may not have seen a problem with yet, but I think they're going to become very popular, are meta glasses.
Seriously, right? Because you can videotape people, you can do all kinds of things with those, and it's very hard to detect if somebody is wearing meta glasses. But it might be
worth adding in that as a very specific item that you're not able to use, because it is, they're becoming super trendy these days, and kids can do all kind of things with those glasses while they're on campus.
What, what we could put in, you see how you have in the second paragraph, well, we listed some of the devices, and it says, et cetera. If y'all want to, we could just add in where they're saying videotape recorder, MP players, smart watches, et cetera. Well, before the et cetera, we could put in, if you'd like, meta glasses, if that's the will of the board. If you want to, why don't you just then make a motion to amend and add in that item into the policy?
And may I say that Meta, I believe, is a company name. So I'll, I will, between now and next board meeting, I'll look up with the-
Research the actual generic name.
Yeah, the, the generic name is. Yes, ma'am. And I'll, and I'll add that. And by the next general meeting, I'll have that to present to y'all as well.
All right. So we can, you can just direct it. So we'll do that and have it ready for the last one. How's that? Okay.
So we're not going to amend it before the motion tonight?
No, you can just say, we'd like it, because we want to get the right generic term. Mr. Morales is right. We, it's like when you say Kleenex.
Right.
Facial tissue.
Everybody in the world says Kleenex. That's a brand name. You really should say tissue.
Right.
So that's been in the vernacular, medical glasses, but really, I guess we should put the generic term for it in there.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
We'll need a motion, I think, to, to send this to the board.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to ask the board for a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the board for approval with a recommendation to add in the appropriate generic term for what is known as meta glasses.
Yes, ma'am. First by Mrs. Harris, seconded by Ms. Dysar. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you all for your time.
Back to you, Mrs. Lamoy.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Agenda item number 7.1 is superintendent's notes. Ms. Vouchay?
Um, you know, just a few quick things. Everything, everybody's been really, really busy with the Super Bowl and such. Now that it's over, I guess, hopefully, the city can kind of get back to a little bit of normalcy as we prepare for Mardi Gras. But I just wanted to mention, in light of that Super Bowl week, I had talked about one of the executives from the NFL talking to our kids. And it was really, really, a, a very nice presentation. He stayed an hour and a half. He met with about 100 of our kids. I think if you look at our Facebook page, you can, you can see that. And he talked to the kids about opportunities in the sports management arena that have, if you're not the athlete, that's fine. Here are a lot of other things that you can be involved with if you have interest in that particular area. And he opened it to Q and A, and so the kids were really, really good. I mean, they questioned him quite extensively, um, for, for about an hour, because he presented for about 30 minutes, and then they brought up question after question, and thought it was well worthwhile, a well worthwhile event. The only thing he didn't answer was, "How much money do you make?" So he, he didn't disclose that in his capacity. But anyway, no. So he did a really good job, and I really would like to publicly thank Jeffrey Pass, who, um, and, and the way that we got, I guess, affiliated with him back in 2006, right after Katrina, uh, he's a, he lived in New York City. And his sons, he has four kids, two, uh, two of them are boys. His sons went to a school, private school in New York called St. Bernard's. So they did a fundraiser for us, because we were Saint Bernard, obviously, at that time. And so he called and contacted me, and he said, "Look, we're doing a, you know, our school is doing a fundraiser, but how about if I give you tickets?" And so we worked it out to where, since that point in 2006, he has donated to our school system four season tickets for the Saints, with two parking passes. So for every home game for the Saints, we pull two names of our employees, and we give each of the employees two tickets to a Saints game and a parking pass. So he has done that since 2006, and has kept that up for quite, you know, a number of years. So that's when I asked him, "Please come talk to our kids." And he very graciously did. So it was a really good event. And I just wanted to make that statement. Anyway, um, we are going to be having a meeting with Nunez. I think I mentioned this last time, and it got canceled or postponed due to the snow issues and such, where we are working on pathways, jumpstart pathways, for our LEAP Connect kids, so those kids with significant disabilities. So we are trying to form a pathway for those students that we hope we can get recognized by the state through the Workforce Investment Commission. And I think we had talked about that once before, but I want to keep bringing up to the forefront, because once we kind of get that together, we're going to need some help in getting the Workforce Investment Commission to recognize these pathways, because they'll only recognize pathways that lead to four- and five-star jobs. And the particular pathways for these kids will probably not lead to that level of employment. But for them, it will be a significant accomplishment, and we would hope that we can carve out a pathway for those students to be able to be successful with for their time after they graduate. So we're in the beginning of that right now. And so, you know, Nunez is, is cooperating with us, so we'll be meeting, I think it's next week, with them to get that ball rolling. Okay? We are, I think everybody got a little flyer on the Special Olympics this year. So mark your calendars for Friday, March 21st, you know, 9:00, 9:30 a.m. at Shamet High Stadium. And we will again host the Special Olympics for our students. And many of our high school students will act as the buddies for each one of our special, um, special education kits. So that's always a wonderful event that involves the entire community, who gets, uh, it's really big, big time, and all, many of our businesses and our first responders come out. So March 21st, that Friday, please, if you can, carve that out in your schedule. And just, uh, we're getting ready, believe it or not. I mean, we're getting, we're going into the testing season, as I call it. And from this point through the end of May, all we're going to be do, not all, but a great deal of our time is going to be in assessing all of our students with so many different types of assessments. It's really getting ridiculous and out of hand. But we have to go through that process. But we also will be meeting, and I had a principal's meeting today and such, we're beginning the staffing process for next school year. So I'll be meeting with each one of them. Ms. Alvarez and I will be meeting with them in staffing numbers of positions at each school. Then we'll go through our transfer day process internally, and then externally, job fair for potential new employees, new teachers for next year. So we'll be doing that. The cycle is coming around again. So forever busy. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchay. And I did just want to mention to give us special thanks to the Saint Bernard Rotary Club, who last week hosted the annual fundraiser Spelling Bee. And all of the proceeds benefit literacy initiatives in the schools and also scholarship dollars. So I want to thank Mr. Warner, the incoming chair of the Rotary, president of the Rotary, um, for your leadership. And thank the Shamet High students, Ms. Janik and Mr. Schneider, who helped to set up that event and, and work the event, make it really nice, a great community fundraiser. Anything you want to add, Mr. Warner?
I don't, I, don't thank me. Thank the enunciator, who did a fabulous job. I did have something, Ms. Vouchay, I couldn't help but notice, in the newspaper, Louisiana's making tremendous strides as far as our rank in education. Do you care to elaborate on that tonight?
Well, you know, and, and I guess this is what is very confusing to me. We are celebrating through the NAEP test, which is the national, they call it the National Report Card. The improvement in education in Louisiana with fourth, and the focus is, they usually test fourth, eighth, and 12th. So the fourth and eighth grade with reading and math. Well, our fourth graders, and it's a statistical sampling throughout the state of Louisiana. And our fourth graders in this state have risen tremendously. You know, we were down close to 49 or 50 overall. We're up to 32, which is tremendous jump in 16th in reading and such. So a lot of those initiatives are working, and that is definitely a cause for celebration with the hard work of everyone we have. So on the one hand, we put this out, and then we hear all this rhetoric about what a terrible job public education is done, and our kids can't read. So it's very confusing to me to try to reconcile those two opposing messages that seem to- So it's very confusing to me to try to reconcile those two opposing messages that seem to be sent out consistently. Let's celebrate all the gains and the upward movement of the children in our state in reading proficiency, but then let's turn around and bash public education because they're saying our kids can't read, which is not true. A LEAP assessment, if anyone wants to see the complexity of a LEAP assessment, and I, at that level, our kids can read, but I'd like to give the, um, I, this is nothing against anybody sitting around this table, I'd like to put the eighth grade LEAP assessment in front of everybody sitting here and see if everyone scores mastery on those particular content. So it is kind of, I'm in the camp, well, let's celebrate the tremendous progress that is being made by students throughout the state of Louisiana, and I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Warner, with that, and let's stop the bashing, which to me is unfounded, of saying our kids can't read. So, which is true. State superintendent and governor and legislators up there, are we celebrating that our kids are doing so well, or are we bashing that we should be, our kids aren't doing well? Tell me what the truth is. I guess that's my response, Mr. Warner.
Thank you.
Let's celebrate.
I say let's celebrate, let's celebrate the gains that we are making and let's celebrate, you know, let, let's be realistic in that every child takes these tests, every child. Children who are, um, academically gifted and children who are academically challenged are taking the same test. Children who cannot speak our language are taking the same test. So you tell me who's going to score and where those scores are going to be. Anyway, that's, that's another discussion, so I choose to let's celebrate the progress that we're making. I also choose to say let's judge our schools and our students and our community by the progress of our kids in many other areas that have, that are not directly a result of LEAP assessments. You know, look at the dual enrollment credits that our kids are earning, college credit, look at the job opportunities they're getting, the pathways we're providing to kids, the service we're doing within the community, the performing arts groups that we have who are making tremendous gains, you know, the, the poise of our kids, uh, I mean, this past weekend, there was the, um, for our special needs kids, what do they call it, the little ball, whatever they have, and-
League of Angels.
-some parent sent to Mr. Schneider, the principal at Shumet High, to say, I just want to thank you for your kids from Shumet High, your band members who came over and played. She said, my son, who is autistic, got a trumpet that day, and he played, your kids welcomed him in and said, come play with us, so he played the entire night with the Shumet High School band, and it just made his night. These are the things that we're talking about, raising really good kids who do really wonderful things, let's celebrate those things, that's what we're all about.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Anything else, Mr. Warner?
No.
No? Well, and again, we want to thank all of our, our teachers and para professionals and school leaders who are helping and to make that magic happen in our classrooms every day. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Our meeting is adjourned, thank you and good night.